We'll now come to order. As most of you know, I'm your town moderator, Bob Hiss. Welcome to this special fall town meeting. Having been advised by our town clerk, Susan Galvin, that a majority of town meeting members are in attendance, I hereby declare that a quorum is present for the transaction of business, and this meeting is now open. In keeping with our tradition, we'll start our meeting with the pledge of allegiance to the flag. If able, will the membership please stand and join with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag-
The United States-
The United States of America.
And to the republic-
To the republic-
For which it stands.
Which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before proceeding with the business of the meeting, however, there are certain preliminary matters to be taken up. First, permission has been granted for certain members and personnel of the school committee and other departments who are not town meeting members to attend the meeting with other members of their respective boards, committees, and departments, upon the understanding, of course, that they will not vote. Hearing no objection from the body in the Zoom chat window, such permission will be and hereby is accorded. I see no objections. Second permission is granted to Milton Cable Vision to televise these proceedings. And third, unless a member raises an objection now in the Zoom chat window, we will continue to use the rules for the conduct of our annual town meeting on June 22, 2020, as the rules for this meeting. Seeing no objection. Tonight's session will begin with a motion that I will read to authorize this special town meeting to proceed as a remote town meeting. Moved that the town of Milton conducts its 2020 Fall Special Town Meeting as a remote town meeting, using the Zoom webinar technology as recommended by the town moderator and approved by the select board on Wednesday, November 4, 2020. Further, during the Fall 2020 Remote Town Meeting, only the following rules will be modified to conform with the limitations of the Zoom webinar technology. Rule one is replaced in its entirety by the following. First, town meeting members are required to register for town meeting with the town clerk and join town meeting via a computing device by clicking on the town meeting link emailed to them in advance. The town clerk will confirm their registration as they are admitted to the remote town meeting. Town citizens and others who are not town meeting members will only be admitted to the remote town meeting with the prior permission of the moderator. Rule two is modified as follows. Second, any town meeting member wishing to speak to any article or pending related matter will first click the Raise Hand button in the Zoom software, and upon being recognized by the moderator, will identify herself or himself by giving his or her name and precinct. If you have not been recognized by the moderator, you are not permitted to speak to the meeting. On occasion, members will informally alert the moderator that they desire to be recognized to speak on a certain article. While your moderator will attempt to remember who desires to be recognized on any article, please be advised that the only way in which a member can be sure to be recognized is to click the Raised Hand button and wait to be recognized. Lastly, Rule 11 is modified as follows. Eleventh, upon a question being put to the town meeting, the moderator will first determine by electronic vote the sense of the meeting. The moderator will display and announce the results of the electronic vote. If the vote is doubted by 25 town meeting members clicking the Raised Hand button, then there will be a roll call of the meeting with the town clerk calling the name of each town meeting member in alphabetical order, and each town meeting member, upon his/her name being called, shall unmute their microphone and answer yes or no. I will now entertain a motion to adopt this rule. If you would signify by saying so in the Zoom chat window. Would one member please say so moved? Thank you. May I have a second? I see Mr. Stone so moved and waiting for a second. Pardon me, scroll up. I see a second. Very good. Does anyone wish to speak to this motion? If so, please signify by raising your hand in the participant window. Seeing none, we will call for the vote. Whoop, is there a hand? I don't see a hand. Let me look. So, do members wish to speak to this motion on conducting a remote town meeting? I'll just give you a chance to put your hand down if that is the case. Okay, in which case, I'll start by recognizing Ms. Swenson. You're recognized? Nope, her hand. We can recognize Ms. Swenson? Ms. Swenson, if you would unmute yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm not actually interested in speaking on this topic.
Okay, if you could just click the, we'll drop your hand. Thank you. Mr. Mullen, did you wish to speak? If you would unmute-
I do.
Yes, Mr. Mullen, you're recognized.
I believe when you read the motion, you said Wednesday, December 4th, and I believe we want to modify that to Monday, December 7th.
You are right. My typo. So I stand corrected. Let me, I will go back and read that opening paragraph again. Thank you, Mr. Mullen.
I propose it as a friendly amendment.
Since I made the motion, I accept your friendly amendment. So it will now read on Monday, December 7th. Thank you, Mr. Mullen. And Mary Reif Hiss, your hand is raised. Do you wish to speak to this motion? If so, would you unmute yourself?
I wished only to second the motion.
Okay, thank you. We'll second the motions by putting so moved or second in the chat window. But thank you for your question. I see no other hands, so we will call for the vote. If you could display the vote. All those in favor of the motion to conduct Milton's 2020 Annual Town Meeting as a remote town meeting, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. And Mike, do we have a couple people on the phone? We need to unmute. Can you unmute them? All those on the phone wishing to support the motion, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no?
Yes.
Thank you. We can close the poll. And display the results. And the motion passes. Thank you. Yes. Okay, we're going to pause for a minute while the Zoom host identifies some callers.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
We're looking for the town member who's attending with a phone number ending in 647. The last three digits of your phone are 647. You're allowed to talk. Could you please identify yourself? We're also looking for a member ending in 587.
Again, we're looking for members ending in 587. If you're the town meeting member attending and the last three digits of your phone number are 587, please identify yourself for the town clerk. We're also looking for a phone number ending in 677. If your phone number ends in 587 or 677, please identify yourself for the town clerk.
John Cochran?
Thank you.
I just, okay, is that it, Bob?
David Burns?
Okay, last chance. We're looking for a phone number, the town meeting member calling with the phone number ending in 647. If you cannot identify yourself ending in 647, the town clerk will have to have you-
Frank Desmond. Could you get that? Frank Desmond.
Thank you. One of the members pointed out that just the text I read on the motion just said annual town meeting, it should have said special town meeting, but they were really adopting the motion as I read it rather than those words. So at this point, that concludes our preliminary business. I'd now like to recognize Sheila Varela, who was the chair of the school committee, who has requested a minute to recognize some town employees. Ms. Varela, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I asked the moderator if I could have a brief moment at the beginning of town meeting to recognize two members of the Milton staff who are retiring. One retired in August and one is retiring at the end of next week. I'd just like to make a few comments about both of them since they're such impactful people to not only the school district, but to the town. I first would like to speak about Superintendent Mary Gormly. Superintendent Gormly asked to meet with me on the morning of August 23rd this past summer, to inform me that she would have to resign for reason of retirement to attend to urgent family matters. To say I was a bit shocked was an understatement because if there is one word I would use to describe Mary, it's this, dedication. I don't think I've ever seen someone who has been more dedicated to the Milton Public Schools than Mary Gormly. Mary began her career with the Milton Public Schools over 40 years ago as a teacher at the Glover Elementary School. Then became principal of the Cunningham School from 1988 to 1997, moved to Assistant Superintendent of Personnel and Curriculum from 1997 to 2008, and finally was appointed Superintendent of the Milton Public Schools from 2008 until her retirement this past August. Over the course of my time on the school committee, as well as a school parent, who's been politically engaged in this town since my children were toddlers, I have seen that Mary Gormly has always put the Milton Public Schools first as a teacher, a principal, an administrator, and finally, as a superintendent. Her impact on education and future of thousands of students will be long lasting, as well as her mentorship to numerous educators in this town. The last few years of me have been special because I've had the privilege and honor to work closely with Mary in my role as chair. And as a superintendent in this Commonwealth, Mary has always had an excellent relationship with her school committee members. Mary cared for Milton, and it showed. Our entire school committee wish her peace and comfort during this difficult time for her family, and only the best in all her future endeavors. Mary Gormly set the standard for leadership. We were all blessed to have her give her heart and soul to the Milton Public Schools for close to 50 years, and the community of Milton thanks her from the bottom of our hearts. And secondly, I'd also like to speak about Dr. Glenn Pavelcheck. Dr. Glenn Pavelcheck will be retiring at the end of this week. This is his last town meeting member as his role as Assistant Superintendent of Business for the Milton Public Schools. Dr. Pavelcheck has dedicated 21 years of fiscal management to the town of Milton, having served in his role as Assistant Superintendent of Business since 2013 to present day. He was on the Milton School Committee from 2003 to 2013, serving four years as a school committee chair. Prior to that, he served for four years on the Milton Warren Committee, two and a half as the chair of that Warren Committee. He also served on numerous other town committees, including the First School Building Committee, the Town's Master Planning Committee, and Town Financial Planning Group. Dr. Pavelcheck has analyzed, prepared, and presented every school committee budget since 1999. I just want to let that set, since 1999. On a personal note, I first met Glenn back in 2003, when I first volunteered to co-chair the Yes for Milton Override Campaign. He was chair of the School Committee Finance Subcommittee back then, and just recently was the former Warren Committee Chair. And he tutored me through the ins and outs of Proposition 2 and 1/2 and how to best answer any query we had from citizens on the need for the override. My only preference before each session I had with Glenn was to speak to me in layman's terms because I needed to be able to pitch this idea and get people on board at the sidelines of soccer games, dance recitals, baseball games, et cetera, and not have them look at me like a deer in headlights. He started coaching me and many others back then on the ins and outs of the fiscal workings of this town, and has continued in that role to present day. Even though finance is not the most fun or enjoyable part of being on school committee, it is the most important. And as I've learned to say since my time as a school committee member, it is all about the money. And the Milton Public Schools, as well as the town of Milton, will forever be in Dr. Glenn Pavelcheck's debt for the vision, fiscal vision, the support and help he has provided to this town and its school system. We also want to thank him from the bottom of our hearts. Congratulations on your retirement, and many blessings to you and Anita and all your future endeavors. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Varela. Now I'd like to recognize Mr. Sean O'Rourke, who's the chair of the School Building Committee, who has asked for a few minutes to update you about the status of the committee's work. Mr. O'Rourke, you are recognized.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Select Board, Warren Committee, and Town Meeting Members. My name is Sean O'Rourke, current resident at 27 Quarry Lane, Precinct 8, and new chair of the School Building Committee. I'm here tonight to provide an update on our current progress and our next steps in the planning of an elementary school. Next slide, please. As a reminder, our committee is comprised of nine members, five of whom were appointed by the town moderator, shown on the top row, along with two members appointed by the school committee, shown on the bottom left, and two members appointed by the select board, shown on the bottom right. Next slide. Thank you. I'd like to take a moment to extend my sincere thanks to recently retired Superintendent Mary Gormly and Glenn Pavelcheck, who is set to retire at the end of this week. Their guidance through the nuances of Milton Public School System was instrumental in assisting our committee through our initial beginnings. Also, we welcome interim Superintendent James Jett and his active participation within our committee. Finally, I'd like to extend my gratitude to our former chair, Carrie Hurley. The phrase "static friction is always greater than kinetic friction" holds true for the work of this committee. Carrie's leadership became the force behind the committee to gain the momentum you'll see in the coming slides. This presentation will touch on the subject of enrollment data, a brief review of our site selection process, a detailed review of our current status with the MSBA, and what our next steps are. Next slide, please. As you may be aware, the town has provided projected enrollment data from the New England School Development Council, or NESDAQ for short. The demographers at NESDAQ utilize different available metrics to project the enrollment system for the school. Next slide. This graph you see is the historic enrollment from pre-kindergarten through 5th grade from 2007 to the current year. As can be seen in the trend lines, there is continued growth in each grade level that has led to the current overcrowding situation we're experiencing in the district. As you review this graph, the vertical yellow line represents the calculated capacity, 1,900, of the district. While the enrollment numbers show a decrease in this year, this is an anomaly that we directly relate to the current pandemic. This reduction in enrollment is assumed to be attributed to the shift of students to private parochial homeschooling, again, due to the pandemic. This assumption will be confirmed in January when the data is reported publicly. At that point, we will be having NESDAQ provide a supplemental report in the spring that will accurately reflect where Milton's student population is located. Next slide, please. Our committees receive these updated NESDAQ enrollment projections that extend to 2030. These enrollment projections are shown on the top portion of this graph, along with the historical enrollment from the previous slide, shown below the cyan line. The current projections show a decrease in the overall pre-K through 5th grade student population, which correlates to the reduced enrollment for the current school year. As we previously noted, we attribute this decline to the current pandemic. Our committee has analyzed NESDAQ's previous projections against actual enrollments from the NESDAQ's approach, and we found that approach to be conservative. As we meet with other town committees and organizations, we'll be happy to jump into the more granular details. It should be noted, even if the current projections were accepted as an accurate portrayal of the town's future enrollment, they're still above the capacity of the district. Next slide. Moving on to site selection. Next slide. The main question all our meeting so far members of the community always start with, where is the planned location, followed by how much is it going to cost? And both of which are valid questions. In regards to costs, MSBA publishes data on construction and designer fees on all projects that fall under their purview. As our committee progresses through the process with MSBA, we will leverage existing data to accurately predict the future costs. In regards to a site, we currently do not have a site. Our current program requires a minimum of four acres and ideally situated in an area that would provide a walkable solution for all students. As you can imagine, available land parcels that fit within this criteria are rare within the town. Since the inception of our committee, we've engaged the town for available parcels, and we continue that engagement. Additionally, we issued a request for proposals in August with the intent of purchasing available land from any respondents, and we had zero responses. Over the next year, our committee will be working diligently with the town to identify an acceptable location. Next slide. The Mass School Building Authority is a quasi-independent government authority created to reform the process of funding capital improvement projects in the Commonwealth public school system. Our district has engaged with the MSBA to enter their core program that allows for certain costs incurred to be reimbursed. Next slide, please. The MSBA statement of interest which we submitted allows the district to choose from eight priorities, and these are evaluated for selection into the capital pipeline of MSBA. Our statement of interest indicated priority 2 and 4, both of which involve the district's current overcrowding. The overcrowding of a school is a high priority for MSBA when deciding on the allocation of their capital funds. However, it should be noted there are 81 other districts that have submitted statements of interest. The priorities chosen by these other districts are unknown, but it is safe to say the competition for available funding will be high. A decision on our statement of interest is expected in late spring of 2021. Next slide. Upon our anticipated selection of our statement of interest into the core program of MSBA, the district will enter into a series of modules. These modules have been developed to guide districts through the process of planning, designing, construction, and closing out of a school building project. Each of these modules is comprised of a series of steps. Let's take a quick look at Module 1 Eligibility Period. Next slide, please. Within this module, there are a series of steps that need to be completed in a 270-day period once we receive our approval of the statement of interest. The formation of our committee has already checked off one of these steps, and we'll work into identifying additional steps that can be addressed prior to our selection in order to accelerate the completion of this module. Please note, within this module, our district needs to vote on the allocation of funding for a feasibility study. Aligning this module's schedule with our town meetings indicates we, as a committee, will be presenting an article in May to the Warren Committee for consideration for funding of a feasibility study for the new school. Next slide. As you can imagine, the planning, designing, construction of a new school is not a short endeavor. Also, with our current capacity issues of the district, progression through these modules and approval of the required funding is critical. Our committee is devoted to meeting with all stakeholders to address concerns, to accelerate our navigation through these modules. After completion of Module 1, our committee will engage in the professional services of an owner's project manager and architect. My goal for this committee is to have an OPM and an architect and progress to Module 3 by the end of the next year, 2021. Next slide. Onto next steps. Next slide, please. As you can see, there are a number of areas of focus for this committee. Our efforts over the coming months will be focused on the following topics. One, we'll be continuing our engagement with the MSBA to relay the overcrowding of the district. Two, with this planned engagement and anticipated approval of our statement of interest, we will be preparing an article for May town meeting for funding of a feasibility study. Three, our committee will continue engagement with the town and identify a site that can be used as the basis for this feasibility study. Four, finally, we will have a NESDAQ provide a revised enrollment projection, as we previously discussed. Next slide. In closing, I wanted to take a moment to realize the current overcrowding may seem like a problem, but it presents an opportunity for the town to create a new learning space for the children. During my visits to witness the overcrowding, I was surprised to see the transformations of classrooms from when I attended elementary school in the 1980s. The new architectural design trends for elementary schools allow our students to experience a learning environment that aligns with new teaching methodologies. Our committee looks forward to serving the town to create a new learning environment that continues the excellent educational tradition of the town of Milton. Thank you.
Mr. O'Rourke, thank you, and my thanks to you and your committee for all the hard work you're doing on our behalf. Next, I'd like to recognize Regina Malle of the Parks and Recreation Department, who has requested a minute to recognize a town employee. Ms. Malle, you're recognized?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you, Moderator Hiss, for letting me speak tonight on behalf of the Board of Park Commissioners. My name is Regina Malle. I'm a town meeting member, Precinct 8, and also one of the park commissioners for the town. I wanted to take an opportunity to highlight the work of the staff in our Park and Rec Department over the last several months. So when the pandemic began, the department was quickly refunding basketball registrations and looking towards summer, wondering how are we possibly going to run our summer camp? And our summer camp is the biggest program that we run. And it seems like mid-June, every day, there was a new camp local to us that was canceling. And we were really wondering, you know, should we open? Is it going to be safe? Should we run the sports clinics this year? The data was changing every day. We ultimately decided to run the camp. And of course, the success of the camp was made possible by many. So the staff for the camp, the Cunningham Foundation, the lifeguards, Fallon ambulance, the parents. The ability to open the camp rested on the shoulders of one person, and that was Paul DiMano, our recreation manager. If Paul had come to our board and said, "I don't feel comfortable. I don't think this is safe," the camp would not have opened, full stop. Paul stepped up and was determined to open the camp and to do so with safety as our number one priority. Children had been in isolation for nearly three months, and Paul was not going to give up trying to create a safe plan with modifications to the structure of the camp and keep everyone safe. I don't think Paul slept for the weeks and months leading up to the opening day. He had to pour through the state guidelines, which were very lengthy. He had to embed handwashing and sanitizing procedures throughout the day, modifying and creating new activity stations to maintain social distance, and adjust the grouping of the campers and the staff to enable smooth contact tracing if needed. This was not a small undertaking. In addition to the summer camp, Paul ran more sports clinics than we've ever offered. We knew that families were going to be looking to have their kids active and socialize more than ever. We knew that families were going to be looking for, to have their kids active and socialize more than ever. And there was an extra two weeks of summer because of the delayed start to the school year. We ran extra sessions of basketball, soccer, street hockey, in addition to baseball, lacrosse, and tennis. We received so many messages from parents, not just thanking us for running the programs, but complimenting the programs for being so well-run with regard to COVID nineteen safety. And we have Paul to thank for his focus on safety, um, to run these clinics and training of the staff. And now with the weather getting colder and limiting our outdoor programs, Paul is still going. He created a new bowling program held at Cunningham Hall, which we are getting great feedback on. Recreational Irish Step starts in January and we're working on a new running program in the new year for all ages. Paul, I estimate that through these programs, you have impacted over five hundred children in a year when so much has been canceled. And we are so grateful for your leadership and dedication to this town. I also need to add a huge thanks to the rest of the team, Bonnie DeVore and Kevin Crisim. Our park and rec department is a very small team and they work very close together to support one another. Bonnie DeVore is our principal clerk, who is the catch-all resource in our team. She manages all the registrations, the refunds, budgeting, accounts payload, receivable, communication, social media. Bonnie has brought great creativity to the process and process improvement to our department this year, in particular with the virtual haunted house. And also the upcoming Milton holiday decorating contest for homes and businesses. And also to Kevin Crisim, our parks manager, he's been a great addition to the team. Kevin was a former park commissioner for many years and joined the team as a staff member last September. Kevin manages the team of park laborers and is incredibly responsive to any park issues and requests that have been, that come up. He's very approachable and collaborative, working with neighbors about their concerns. Um, and Kevin's also been instrumental in fundraising for the construction work that was needed for the new street hockey rink at Kelly Field. Which is going to be named in honor of the legendary former Milton High School hockey coach, Skip Lapworth. The rink opened at the end of October and has been hugely popular and getting a lot of use. So in closing, huge thanks to Paul, Bonnie, and Kevin. In my four years as park commissioner, I feel this team is as strong as it's ever been. And on behalf of the board and the entire town, we sincerely thank you for your efforts and dedication, especially in this crazy year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mally. Uh, lastly, I'd like to recognize Caroline Cincella, who's the town's health director, who would like to provide us with a brief update. Ms. Cincella, you're recognized?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yes. Hi, I'm Caroline Cincella, the health director and town meeting member precinct eight. And I'd just like to give you a short update on COVID nineteen in the community. Currently, we have had eight hundred and thirteen cumulative COVID nineteen cases since our first confirmed case on March first, twenty twenty. The Milton residents who are initially most impacted by the virus were residents with an underlying health condition, resided in long-term healthcare facilities, and were over the age of fifty. In the spring, COVID nineteen positive residents, close contacts mainly consisted of just family members. Or a small circle of exposures who had to quarantine. My staff and I and volunteer school and retired nurses handle the workload. In the summer, June, July, and August, the cases significantly decreased to between zero to two cases a day. And many days, we had no confirmed cases. In September, after the opening of schools for its pre-K to twelve and higher education, including Curry College, the cases began to increase. The COVID cases initially increased in the nineteen to thirty-nine-year age range with a few documented cases in children less than twelve years old. Since the Thanksgiving holiday, the Milton cases have increased significantly, surpassing the numbers in the spring. The past four days, we've had twenty-two, twenty-three, twelve cases, and today twenty-five cases, which includes all age groups. In addition, when residents test positive now, they have more close contacts that have to be quarantined. The Community Tracing Collaborative is currently working closely with the Health Department to follow up on positive cases and contacts. I post the Milton COVID nineteen count daily on the town of Milton website under the red banner labeled coronavirus. I'm also working with Boston University graduate students. And Boston University Assistant Professor of Public Health Patricia Lloyd to graph cumulative data reports. The data will be published shortly to the town website, and I thank them for their help. I encourage everyone to continue to wear masks to slow the spread of the virus transmission. The Health Department has canceled our seasonal flu clinic this week as town hall is closed because of multiple cases, and we have now gone remote till Monday. I have not received any information from the Massachusetts Department of Public Health about the administration of the COVID nineteen vaccine. Twelve years ago, during the H one N one pandemic, the Health Department planned and executed twenty clinics. For town residents and administered twenty-five hundred vaccines. I am confident that we'll be able to do this again. As information becomes available, I'll be posting this on the town website, the Milton Times, and various other media platforms. Thank you, and I wish you all happy holidays and a brighter twenty twenty-one. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cincella. Uh, let's proceed to Article One, uh, which you'll find on page ten in your warrant. First, I'd like to make, uh, a few opening comments in Article One because I received, uh, a, a number of questions after the warrant was published. Uh, some town meeting members approached me almost two weeks ago, asking questions about potentially amending Article One. I'd like to commend the town meeting members for doing so, uh, so early because it really helps, uh, town meeting go much more smoothly. Uh, this led to calls with citizens about, uh, school line items. And after explaining the budget process, uh, the town meeting's role and, uh, understanding the citizens and the members' intent. Um, the citizens and the town meeting members decided to withdraw any amendments, so that's why nothing was posted on the town website or, uh, or distributed. They instead asked to speak to town meeting tonight, which is their right, and we have three speakers who sought approval to speak, which has been granted. Uh, just, uh, one, um, guideline for tonight, I heard during the, some of these calls. That, uh, I think inappropriate comments were being made to some of the citizens and perhaps some of the members for, uh, daring to speak up. Um, these are hearsay, so I won't repeat them. But I know, uh, here at Milton Town Meeting, we have a tradition of courtesy, which I'm proud, and I'm confident the tradition will, uh, continue tonight. Uh, some reminders for debate, uh, these are budget articles, and I've traditionally provided quite a bit of leeway to speakers. I'd like to keep the comments tonight and the debate to the topic of the budget. Uh, the speakers may, of course, propose or oppose the spending. They may and should give reasons for their point of view. Um, I would like to, uh, avoid an in-depth debate, however, about department operations and alternate methods of operations. Uh, because the public meetings for those various departments are the right place for that debate. Um, and town meeting is just too big and unwieldy a forum to set specific policy. And we'd probably end up designing a camel instead of a horse. Um, and so a reminder for members and citizens watching tonight, uh, the school department has a special rule in place under Massachusetts law. Whereby town meeting can authorize, uh, any school budget it chooses. However, only the school committee and department decides how the money is spent once town meeting allocates it. So for example, this, uh, the school may argue why they need the money, and you can see such comments in the comment section of the article. And town meeting can authorize the money or not based on those arguments. But town meeting can't condition the spending, meaning they, they can't say, I will approve the funds only if the school spend it on the things they announced tonight. So town meeting can authorize the funds tonight, thinking it is for one thing, and theoretically, the school department could authorize it tomorrow on something else. So by all means, let's have a polite and courteous discussion on the appropriateness of the spending and request. While recognizing this unique authority provided to the school department. So with that, Article One. Recommended that the town vote to amend the following appropriations voted by the twenty twenty annual town meeting by the articles referenced in the table below. For the twelve-month period beginning July one, twenty twenty. Employee benefits group insurance, FY twenty twenty-one adjustment of sixty thousand dollars. Fire overtime, adjustment of a hundred thousand dollars. Schools, adjustment of a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. The reserve fund, an adjustment of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a total amendment of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And that to meet said appropriation, the sum of five hundred and ninety thousand dollars be raised from the tax levy. Uh, columns include appropriate columns, uh, uh, include appropriation for the stabilization fund in Article Five of the June fifteenth, twenty twenty annual town meeting. And one note, uh, the select board pointed out in your comment section, if you look at the fourth bullet. It reads the money allocated for the fire department's overtime, uh, says sixty thousand, that's a typo, it should be a hundred thousand, which then makes it map back to the table I just read. So with that, I'd like to recognize, uh, first, Melinda Collins, the chair of the select board who submitted this article. Uh, Ms. Collins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, Melinda Collins, one seventy Hillside Street, uh, meeting member precinct nine. Uh, in introducing this article, I'd first, um. Like to thank Amy Dexter, our town accountant on behalf of the select board and our town administrator, Mr. Dennehy. This is Amy's last town meeting as her town accountant before she joins Milton Public Schools as the next Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs. Um, Amy, as in all our budget, um, uh, dealings. Has provided excellent and invaluable guidance to both our finance committee and the school's finance committee as we have worked on these adjustments together. And for the past decade, um, Amy's been a steadfast counselor, uh, to us. She's also chaired the capital planning committee. Her, her door or her phone, rather, uh, both of them are always open and she was always great about answering questions for residents as well as staff. And, um, elected officials, and she helped create a, a wonderful connection to the state, um, through the division of local services. So the board and Mr. Dennehy are very happy that Amy has chosen to continue serving the town as our next Assistant Superintendent for Business Affairs. And we congratulate her and her family, uh, and wish her every success and the very best as she continues on the next leg of her professional journey with Milton. I'd also like to thank the warrant committee chair, George Asher, and members of, uh, the warrant committee, as well as, uh, the town moderator, uh, Mr. Hiss. And our clerk, the town administrator, and our staff for collaborating on the town meeting. And the school finance committee, the school committee and superintendent Jett and superintendent, uh, for business affairs, Glenn Pavlicek. For working to formulate, uh, these budget adjustments. While the, the requests couldn't be fully funded, as you'll see, uh, on table one, I, I think it's on page twelve. This budget does address fiscal stability for the town, several long-term school needs, and unforeseen needs for our steadfast firefighters. Um, and, uh, with that, I will be happy to, um, to, uh, take any questions.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Collins. Uh, right now, before we get to other members, uh, Ms. Varela, the chair of the school committee, uh, asked to be recognized. Uh, Ms. Varela, you're recognized.
Thank you, um, Mr. Moderator. I, I just wanted to speak to this article, um. And also, I don't, I don't know if, um, I don't know if people want to ask a select board, um, chair Collins any questions, but I just wanted to speak to it. Um, and then also ask that Superintendent James Jett, who recognized, to just go over, um, and explain the six positions, um, that we're asking for. Um, in the additional hundred and eighty thousand dollar FY, FY twenty twenty adjustment. Um. Um, I'm, again, I'm Sheila Egan Varela. I'm the chair of the Milton School Committee and I'm a town meeting member precinct eight. Um, I just want to make a note to the body of town meeting that, uh, these six positions that are noted in. Um, our warrant, uh, were previously agreed upon and approved for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. By the Milton School Committee, the Milton Select Board, and the Milton Town, and the Milton Warrant Committee last spring. But as many of you know, when COVID nineteen hit, departments within the town of Milton were asked to roll back their asks to the FY twenty-one budget. To the fiscal uncertainty the pandemic might bring to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So together, the school, along with our other town departments, stood up to the call and kept only a rollover budget in place for the start of the school year. Even though we are in the middle of a health and racial pandemic, along with severe over enrollment throughout the district. At annual town meeting this past summer, the town voted on an estimated budget as opposed to the concrete amended budget we have before us tonight. The school department now has the funds back in place to put these six positions into the district and graciously asks you for a yes vote on this article. The work and the dedication of the Milton Public Schools during these unprecedented times should be something that every town meeting member and resident of Milton should be immensely proud of. We ask town meeting members, along with parents and guardians of students, to understand that application has been vetted, analyzed, and dissected. By all the necessary elected and appointed bodies of this town, and we again ask for a yes vote. I don't know, Mr. Moderator, if you can, um, acknowledge Superintendent Jett to speak to them, or I don't know, um. The black, select person Collins, if you, uh, want to take any questions for you first.
I'll tell you what, if, if Mr. Jett would like, I know you prepared a slide, uh, why doesn't Mr. Jett, uh, we can put that slide up and Superintendent Jett can speak to it now. How's that?
Thank you.
Uh, Superintendent Jett, you are recognized.
Good aft, uh, good evening, and thank you, Mr. Moderator, um, and thank you Chair Varela. Um, on behalf of the Milton Public Schools, I would like to thank all of the members of the town, uh, meeting. And, uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about some of the positions that we asked for. We were asking for, uh, an elementary technology teacher. Um, what are the positions that we were looking at? As you know, we have over forty-five hundred students or close to forty-five hundred students in the Milton Public, uh, schools. Under these circumstances, and within the last couple of years, there's a device in the hands of all of our students, along with our faculty and staff. In addition to security cameras, uh, digital phones, and so it's, it's very, uh, inconceivable to think that three IT individuals or technology teachers will be able to handle that caseload. So we do have a technology teacher in there to provide support, educational technology support for our faculty and staff to better reach our students. The other, uh, position, the second position is an elementary reading interventionist. Um, research has shown that students who are not reading at grade level by grade three have a very difficult time catching up. And we want to make sure that we have, uh, positions in place to do individual work or small group work to support our students. And that was prior to the pandemic, but we find it is even more important considering the thirteen-week, uh, school closure and the current, uh, hybrid model. Uh, the same holds true for elementary, uh, math specialists. Again, building on those building blocks, math is a cumulative subject. We feel as though if we show up the foundational math skills, that we would better be able to support our students to, uh, possibly not meet, meet in standard or falling behind in both of those. The elementary reading and elementary math, uh, specialists could be individuals that could help support us and, and provide intervention before it leads to students falling behind in. And ended up needing additional services as they progress through the grades. Uh, we look at the middle school, uh, world language teacher. This is very important as the enrollment in the middle school is significantly growing. Last year in two thousand nineteen, two thousand and twenty, you had sixteen sections where we had twenty-eight or more students in a world language class. Um, this position will better support, uh, our students, particularly in the Spanish and Latin, uh, world language track. And then, uh, high school, we requested a science teacher. Um, our enrollment is growing and to continue to be competitive with very similar districts and to offer the course offerings we do in the science department. But also meeting DESI and OSHA guidelines, uh, we felt as though it was very important for us to have another, uh, uh, science teacher that, one, keeps the class sizes down and makes it safe to execute. Uh, labs, uh, and meet the needs of all of our students. And then, uh, we asked for a district-wide, uh, tech support person, and I think I just alluded to that. Uh, we've been really operating with a very minimal staff as compared to some of the surrounding districts or districts that we kind of compare ourselves to. We were really behind the eight ball in terms of the necessary staff to meet the needs, and it's even more exaggerated right now by the current pandemic. And regardless if you're in a hybrid model or full remote model, uh, there's some portion of every student's day that is learning remote. And we were definitely, we're definitely in need of that support. So that is a brief overview of those six positions that we were lobbying for. And again, I would close my comments by reiterating what Chair Varela said. And that is, these are positions that were really discussed this time last year in need for our, our enrollment, uh, coming in for this year. And we're hoping that the, the, the town meeting looks upon this very favorably. So thank you, Mr. Ma- Moderator.
Um, thank you, sir. Uh, since we have both members and citizens, uh, tonight, what I'd like to do is interweave them. Uh, the firsthand I see is, uh, Mr. Walker, uh, Mr. Walker, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Leroy Walker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 10. I'd like to start by complimenting the Select Board and the Town Administrator. I think that overall, the articles before us represent both a smart and forward-looking allocation of resources and also one that meets what are clearly some dire needs, as the Superintendent just explained. So I stand in support, or I rise in support of this article. I do have a couple of questions for the Superintendent and for the Select Board. The first is for the Superintendent. In the absence of standardized tests such as MCAS, has the Milton Public Schools been able to develop a means to assess student performance and student progress? Clearly, it seems like at least four of these positions are directly related to that, so that, I applaud that. But the question is, how do we, how do we know how students are doing, how they're progressing? And that helps us, obviously, to allocate some of the time of these positions that will now be put in place. That's the first question. The second question is just, have Milton teachers been offered any training in remote instruction? Two more questions, but I'll stop there.
Okay. Mr. Jett, would you like to answer those?
So yeah. Yes, and thank you, and thank you for your inquiries, Mr. Walker. First and foremost, you're absolutely right. As we all acknowledge, MCAS has been put on, put into vance for this past spring. Actually, we just got word just recently that it's, another delay is an MCAS, as you can imagine, with some of the schools, less than 10% of the school populations in the Commonwealth being full in person. So we are currently, Dr. Spalding, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Personnel, is meeting with department heads and curriculum coordinators. They are in the process of looking at common assessments throughout the district, particularly at your elementary level, to see where our strengths are in filling in or identifying content gaps. So that is something that's definitely in process. And as far as the training, there have been pockets of online or remote training. We have a training session coming up this Thursday, the 10th. I want to give a special shout out and thank you to the MFE, who supported us with a half of a grant that allows us to have EdTech come in and do some training, particularly in this first round with our middle and high school faculty and staff, and they plan to do the same with all four of the elementary schools. So in addition to that, there have been pockets of training. We really looked at what transpired in the spring with remote learning, which we all understand, and it wasn't, it wasn't the standards or the expectations set by the schools. It was done by the Commissioner of Education, which we all felt that the Bob expectations were low. But faculty and staff have worked diligently and collaboratively over the course of the summer and at the beginning of the year to try to bolster up that remote learning opportunities. And since we started school on September 16th in a hybrid model, we have also worked with faculty and staff. It's not perfect, but we're trying to improve upon it with some live streaming, particularly for those who are negatively impacted by COVID, whether being a positive or being identified as a close contact. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Walker.
Should I go with my?
Yes, please. Yes, your other questions, please.
Okay. Yeah. So Chair Varela mentioned that these positions were originally approved as part of the fiscal 21 budget. So I assume then they will be part of the fiscal 22 wages and salaries base. So the question for the Select Board and the Town Administrator is, were there other departments that reduced positions as part of the more conservative treatment of the budget earlier on? And if the answer to that question is yes, how do you plan to address the need for increased, increased resources in those departments? We had talked about the Health Department, for example, as an area that might need additional staff. I know that the Police Department and the Library have been hit hard in terms of staffing. So what's, what's the plan for those other departments for fiscal 22 and addressing those resource needs?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Ms. Collins, can you address that question or direct it to someone?
Mr. Moderator, Madam Chair, I can answer Mr. Walker's questions.
Mr. Dennehy, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Walker, we, we have received FY 22 budgets for 95% of the town side. What we saw and what was presented to my board two weeks ago was a possible restructuring at the, at the Police Department. What it will entail is not, is a net zero from an employee perspective, but instead revisiting the two deputy system that was in place some time ago in the department. In essence, one of the superior officers would be promoted to Deputy Chief, and it would be a net zero as, with respect to number of employees in the Police Department. We also received the Board of Health and Health Department's proposal, in which they are asking for an Assistant Health Director. Paige Appolito, our Human Resources Director and Assistant Town Administrator, is putting together a January meeting of the Personnel Board to address both the MPD and Board of Health Health Department request. We did have one employee that was furloughed at the beginning. We had a parking enforcement officer who was part-time. That gentleman has been furloughed since the outbreak in mid-March.
Great. Last question. And this is for the Town Administrator and the Fire Chief. This is on the Fire Department appropriation. What's the total number of budgeted firefighters? This is not command staff, just firefighters that are actually out on the street. And what percentage? Nine people out on work injuries seems like a pretty big hit to firefighter staffing. So I'm just trying to get a sense of how bad they're hurting. And then the follow-on is, who's responsible for monitoring work-related injury leaves? And do we have someone who's responsible for creating light-duty assignments when that's appropriate?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Chief Madden, are you there? And can you answer Mr. Walker's questions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I appreciate it. Can you hear me?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
Okay. So we, total complimenters, 56 firefighters, then myself, and then the secretary, Ms. Ambrose. So 56 firefighters on the street with 72 lieutenants, and then the firefighters. Nine firefighters out long-term is just, it's just one of those, those things that it happens. The nature of the job is a physical, physical job that we're constantly doing the work that's required. And just looking at the big picture of this, there's really no one thing that, that really sets it out. It's just, the work has continued. Since COVID happened, the Fire Department, and I can, I can honestly say, the men and women of the Fire Department have done a phenomenal job since this pandemic started. They come to work, they work hard, they put themselves in harm's way, not knowing what was going to happen when you cross that threshold, going into somebody's house with, somebody that says that they're feeling ill. They've been doing a fantastic job unwavering in their, their efforts to serve the citizens of the town. Just moving forward with the way that things have happened, a couple of the injuries are reoccurring injuries, and they're typical back needs, stuff that it just happens to firefighters. We ask these guys to wear 75 pounds of equipment, go and, you know, go to work. And that's what building fires, that's for, you know, the checking the smoke detectors, you know, in buildings and stuff. So they're constantly wearing that gear. It puts stresses on the body. Then you add in the pandemic. When we go out to medicals, we see people at their work. And when you're lifting these patients off the floor, they're never in a perfect position. The men and women, you know, have to get themselves into somebody's bedroom, bathroom, basement, wherever, car accidents, and help these patients out. And you're never in a, in a stable environment. You're always dynamic situation. And then you add in the PTE for the pandemic. It's just, it adds to the stress, it adds to the physical nature of the job. So they've been doing fantastic. And I, I can't thank them enough for, for the attitude and the effort that they give every day. As far as monitoring the, the, the people that are out, that's myself. There's a lot of stuff that, that's on, on the plate. Being new to the position, I started July 1st. There's a lot going on. And to monitor these guys, I have been, I'm in close contact. We use cabinet risk strategies to help defer some of the costs with the injured firefighters, constant contact with them, constant contact with the firefighters. If they were given a date, you know, for two weeks out for an MRI, we're constant contact to try and move those, that date up to try and get them feeling and get, and get them the help that they need. Right now, that's pretty much where we're at right, right now. I hope I answered your question.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. I'll now move to the first of the three citizens that asked to speak. We'll recognize Jennifer Shea, who's a registered voter. Ms. Shea, when we unmute you, if you would just remember a few things we discussed, we keep our speakers to 10 minutes. If you would identify your name and your street address when you, when you start. If you have any questions, you can direct them to me, and I'll try to find the appropriate person on the town's department to answer it. So Ms. Shea, you're recognized.
Okay, great. Can you hear me okay?
Very clearly. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Jen Shea, and I'm at 53 Wood Street. Thank you for letting me speak tonight, Moderator Hiss. I am speaking as a concerned citizen and parent. Myself, along with many other parents, feel that our kids could be in school more. In fact, at last week's school committee meeting, Mr. Jett talked about proposed improvements to the hybrid model. There were pros and cons for each scenario, but what it came down to is that the major obstacle was more, I'm sorry, the major obstacle to more in-person time is budget. We have all been asked to adapt during this pandemic, at work, at school, in sports, at church, in clubs, and at meetings. No one is operating business as usual right now, including Milton Public Schools. The schools are not fully functional right now. So why are we operating as though we are? Why are six positions that were asked for pre-pandemic still being asked for while our schools are not functioning as normal? Kids being out of school have financial costs down the road. Milton Public School is looking at short-term fixes for what is increasingly becoming a long-term problem. The reality is that the longer the kids are out of school, the more money the town is going to need to spend to catch, catch them up down the road. I am asking for your help. While I fully support money going to our schools and to fire, town meeting members, I ask you to question your school committee and your Select Board if there is more, a more appropriate way for the money to be spent this school year. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd now like to recognize Town Meeting Member Laura Kessler. Ma'am, you're recognized.
I don't have a comment, Mr. Moderator.
Your hand was up.
Beg your pardon.
Oh, no problem. Then I'll recognize Ms. Christensen. Cindy Christensen, please.
Thank you. Cindy Christensen, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. A little over a week ago, a group of concerned parents reached out to me and to other town meeting members with a goal to figure out a way for our public schoolchildren in Milton to have more in-person class time when it's safe to do so. To reach that goal, we need money and a plan. Many ideas and obstacles floated around, but one question kept floating to the top. Why are we voting to hire six new teachers, a decision that was made pre-pandemic, when what we really need now is to be spending money on efforts that will increase students' in-school learning time as quickly and as safely as possible? Mr. Jett has presented possible plans. Some of them require funding that he does not have. Our town, like many others, has shifted the cost, the additional cost of public education during a pandemic onto parents, grandparents, and children. Children are paying by missing out on what we know to be the best learning environment, and parents, and sometimes grandparents, are paying by reductions in income due to reductions in their work hours so that they can fill in for the missing teaching time, or by paying for private schools, tutors, babysitters, and more. This is cost shifting, and it is unfair, and I'm sure that none of us wants it. But to change directions, we need funds and a change of plans. Look, because of the pandemic, most of us have had to make changes to our personal financial decisions. The schools need to do the same. With the help of Moderator Hiss, we learned just yesterday that although the warrant's comments for Article 1 describes the school funds as going to, towards six new positions, according to Mass General Law, our Superintendent and School Committee has the final say in how these school funds will be spent. So with these comments in mind, Mr. Moderator, I ask that you and our town meeting member colleagues here today join me in these three actions. Number one, tonight, vote in favor of Article 1. Number two, immediately, starting now, work with the constituents in our precincts, Mr. Jett, and the school board to ensure that these school funds go toward efforts that facilitate and accelerate the transition to in-class learning and not for the purpose described in the warrant comment. Number three, allow parents to speak up, to bring forward their ideas without intimidation or fear of retaliation. They know their children best. Some have expertise in education, health, et cetera. Everyone with whom I've spoken has compassion for the health and needs of teachers and others, people who we need onboard in order for increased in-class learning to happen. It's our responsibility as town meeting members to try our best to represent the 2,600 or so residents in, in our precinct. We have started to listen. I encourage all residents of Precinct 7 with interest and thoughts about how to save, excuse me, safely and efficiently increase in-class learning time during this pandemic to call or write to me. My phone number is 617-322-9323, and my email is clcmilton@gmail.com. Again, I encourage my fellow town meeting members to vote in favor of Article 1. Secondly, we should all do everything we can, starting now, to advocate that the school funds in Article 1 are used to increase safe in-class learning time. And number three, let's work together to get this done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christensen. I'd now like to recognize our second citizen speaker, Ms. Christian Cosiel. Ms. Cosiel, you're recognized with the same observations I provided to Ms. Shea.
Hi, I am Kristen Cosiel, and I live at 17 Standish Road. Can you hear me? Okay?
Very clearly. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I come here as a mother, speaking on behalf of the most important people in my life, my children. I ask that tonight, you town meeting members approve Article 1 and vote yes for more funding for the Fire Department and schools. If this funding is approved, I hope that you can discuss a recommendation to the committee and superintendent how this money should be best spent. I'm a nurse, not an educator, speaking tonight, and I'm here to advocate for my children and my friends' children. I hope that you discuss if these six positions in the warrant are the absolute best use of funds during this remote hybrid style of learning. Although news about the vaccine is exciting, even I, as a nurse, have no idea when I will be receiving the vaccine. This is not a magic bullet that will get our lives back to normal in the spring. Spending money to provide a quality education now does not take away from the future budget. It will help prevent further learning loss, which will come at a heavy price for our already overcrowded and highly residential tax-based town. We need to ensure every dollar spent by the schools this year is used in the best possible manner to lower the cost down the road as we prepare to discuss a new school building and firehouses in our town's future. I wish for the extra money to go to the school to focus both on improving the style of learning, along with long-term sustainability of the Milton Public Schools. I hope that a I hope the discussion tonight focuses on the kids and how these funds can be used to stabilize the current and future versions of our schools, as well as prevent further educational loss and devastating mental health impact of the pandemic on our littlest citizens who don't have the pleasure of speaking this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I'd now like to recognize Elizabeth Carroll, Town Meeting Member. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Moderator Hiss. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can, thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Elizabeth Carroll, uh, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. And I'm here tonight as well in my capacity as a Milton Public Schools parent. I have a first grade student at Tucker School and another child not yet in elementary school. Um, so I guess I just want to begin by publicly thanking uh, the faculty and staff of Tucker and the staff of Milton Public Schools, uh, because I'd like to share the perspective that my family is actually having, for me, what is a surprisingly um, positive experience with learning uh, this fall in the midst of this global pandemic. And um, I really want to appreciate and thank everybody involved in that. Uh, my daughter's not only learning to read, but she's learning to read in French, um, which is a constant pleasant surprise to me as someone who never got to learn French. Um, so, you know, given that and sharing the concerns of many of my fellow parents in town um, around the ripple effects of this unprecedented time in our children's education, I I want to speak out in full support of these positions. Um, it seems to me that, you know, when we're dealing with this co- uh, remote learning, hybrid learning situation, adding an elementary technology specialist and a district-wide tech support person, those seem like really smart moves to support all of us in helping this um, remote and hybrid learning, which I think many of us understand is the necessary reality, uh, helping that be as productive and and um, effective as possible for our kids. I'm also really pleased to see the addition of uh, elementary reading and math specialists um, because, as others have mentioned, we recognize the um, sort of short-term and potential long-term effects of needing to help our students catch up uh, from the learning loss of last spring in particular. Um, and so I really uh, am looking forward to voting yes on this article in order to approve these funds and move them forward without delay so that they can help us um, in this this current year. Um, I also wanted to ask, though, a question about the Chapter Seventy-eight in particular. Um, so I notice in the comment below the table, uh, which we can't see on the screen currently, but I see it in my warrant, um, that the state received approximately four hundred and eight thousand dollars of additional Chapter Seventy-eight from the state. Um, just to point out, that was to acknowledge our increased enrollment in the in the schools. Um, and so we're receiving this funding to support the students that we have in buildings. Um, but my question is, uh, the balance of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, um, where where is that funding? Um, was that what we anticipated receiving through Chapter Seventy for this year and therefore we already budgeted for that? Um, I guess my qu- bottom-line question is, um, you know, we're receiving a hundred and eighty thousand dollars additional here um, for these new positions, which again, I fully support. Um, but where is the rest of that four hundred and eight thousand dollars?
Okay, um, Ms. Collin or Mr. Dennehy, can you answer uh, that question?
Um, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Chair of the Select Board, um, one seventy Hillside Street, uh, Precinct Nine, Meeting Member. Um, so if we if we look at the budget in total, um, the school budget is approx- approximately fifty-three million dollars. Chapter Seventy-eight is about nine point five million dollars. So, um, we're using a lot of additional money in the form of um, property tax in order to um, make up for um, money that's not provided by the state. So in general, um, all the state aid is put together. And um, obviously, if there is aid that is um, for special education only, that's spent there. So so that that's the reason for that. It's not as if we had this um, uh, large amount of Chapter Seventy and this the the town is using it for something. There's simply such a small amount of it. Um, and uh, that's one reason that the school committee and the uh, Select Board uh, Finance Committee, that those two finance committees, um, work together collaboratively on the budget and when there's also budget adjustments. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Um, and Ms. Carroll, I think, uh, I'm not sure I heard. I believe you're Precinct Three, just for the members. So if members could remember to announce their uh, precinct. Uh, thank you. Uh, I'll go to our last citizen, uh, Mr. Gregory Navaloff. Again, uh, Mr. Navaloff, when you're recognized, if you could follow the same guidelines as as the other citizens. Thank you, sir.
Uh, perfect, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, please.
All right, thank you, Moderator Hiss, uh, for providing me this opportunity to share my thoughts with respect to the use of the new funds as stipulated in Articles One and and realize we're talking about Articles One, but I'd also largely incorporate Article Two as well. Um, and special thanks to all the employees of the town of Milton and all they're doing during COVID. Um, my name's Greg Navaloff, President of Eleventh Standish Road, Precinct Two, and father of uh, two Milton Public School students. Um, I'm a certified public accountant and a partner in RSM's Financial Consulting Practice, where I advise clients on a variety of financial matters. RSM's the fifth-largest national accounting firm. Um, in my twenty years of consulting clients with respect to financial issues, including budgeting and spending, I've learned that economic cycles are unavoidable and as such, access to liquidity is key to withstanding downturns, whether they're caused by macroeconomic business or public health factors. For towns such as Milton, establishment of stabilization or rainy day funds is crucial. I've uh, further found that organizations with strong leadership rebound faster from these downturns, particularly where adequate funding exists. Um, I believe Milton has strong leadership. Uh, I was, however, surprised to see the warrant committee recommendations. As Ms. Varela previously stated during this meeting, it's all about the money. So of of the one point three million of uh, recommended supplemental expenditures uh, based on the newly identified funds, the warrant committee is proposing that only two hundred and forty should go to the schools. And for this reason alone, I'd urge town meeting members to vote no. So this is, you know, too small of an amount to, given that schools are oversubscribed and struggling to deal with COVID. I'd I'd venture to guess that no other town departments, at least based on what I've heard from this call, uh, meeting, uh, have had the same struggles that the school has been dealing with, uh, particularly in light of COVID. I draw up specific attention to the fact that two hundred and forty thousand is less than the amount of new funds that town has received specifically due to the increased school enrollment. So clearly, state realizes the financial impact that rising en- enrollment has on our students. And despite despite this, the town is proposing moving money away from the schools. Uh, presumably, those uh, that do not have children in Milton Public School are less likely to be aware of the hardships that the school has been facing with repeated closures due to COVID and the inability to establish a plan that would provide students with any more than a few hours of in-school learning per week. Uh, some of the obstacles that exist, to the best of my understanding, being the parent of two MPS students, include the limited availability to invest in remote learning resources, the lack of temporary space to allow for additional learning areas, and needing areas to accommodate social distancing, such as more in-school hours, um, that can be viable, so that more in-school hours can be viable. Uh, limited funds available for additional busing costs to allow for social distancing during transportation, limited resources to conduct onsite COVID testing so that teachers and students can be rapidly and repeatedly tested to feel safe, uh, lack of social distance after school programs so that working parents can enroll students in school rather than being forced to choose remote learning options. These are just to name a few. So I'm I'm deeply concerned with the warrant committee's proposal. It doesn't put back uh, the money where it's needed. You get two hundred and fifty thousand of money that's got undisclosed future uses and seven hundred and fifty thousand in the stabilization fund. Uh, the Merriam-Webster defines a rainy that rainy day fund as a fund of money set aside especially by a government to use during a time of revenue shortfall or budget deficits. Due to the pandemic right now, we have both. So in light of uh, what what I've seen here, I strongly, I encourage uh, the members to to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'd now like to recognize uh, Ms. Rachel Posar. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, this is Rachel Posar, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Eight, and I'm also the parent of two elementary school students here in Milton Public Schools. So first, I want to acknowledge that every parent and community member wants students to be able to return to school in person full-time. But I also think it's important to remember that the Return to School Task Force that worked throughout the summer made equity one of its priority considerations from the outset. I wanted to point out that if we now, as a community, push to reallocate these funds to incrementally increase the amount of in-person learning time for the students in the hybrid model, we're depriving the overall community of specialist teachers in technology, math, reading, and world languages. These are positions that were needed before the pandemic. The need for these positions to be filled will be tenfold after the pandemic. There is a point at which funneling more money into in-person learning leads to diminishing returns. In the case of this year, it's my opinion that it's not worth eliminating six sorely needed teaching positions to offer approximately two hours of extra in-person time to a subset of elementary school students. The equitable approach would be to invest this money by hiring teachers whose role will be to teach and support all students, both remote and hybrid, this year and in subsequent years, regardless of their family's needs during the pandemic. I urge my fellow town meeting members to support this article and later to support the efforts of the school committee and the superintendent's office to act on behalf of the interests of all MPS students. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we have no other citizen speakers. By the way, I'd like to thank uh, each of them for coming prepared and uh, participating in our town meeting process uh, with so much eloquence and dignity. Uh, we have one last town meeting member with their hand raised. No, I see two. I'll go to uh, Ms. Ms. Friedman Hannah. Ma'am, you're recognized.
Karen Friedman Hannah, Precinct Two. Um, I actually rise to support what the last town meeting member had said quite a bit. It it echoes what my opinions were going to be and to state that uh, I've had multiple uh, family members in my neighborhood who contacted me prior to this meeting stressing that they really don't feel that increasing the amount of in-school learning is appropriate right now. They feel the quite the opposite, actually, and have raised concerns given the increased numbers that are being experienced both in our town and our state of uh, COVID-positive um, cases. And as a healthcare provider, I can tell you, the numbers that we're seeing in the hospital that I work in at BID and Needham have gone up dramatically in the last couple of weeks. The hospital is packed with people and it is anticipated that that's only going to get worse. So the idea of trying to be increasing the in-person learning currently really seems shortsighted in the bigger picture currently. Um, I wanted to also acknowledge the unbelievable um, success that the teachers and the administrators have made happen in the schools. I know how hard they are working and how stressful this is for them, not only as teachers for our students, but as parents themselves in most instances, where they have their own families that they're trying to coordinate all of this as well. And the undertaking, the the dedication that they've shown has been enormous. The uh, insights into the students from what I've been hearing has been enormous. And they've put their own stressors aside as much as possible to really provide a very, very successful and powerful learning situation despite unbelievable demands. So I wanted to be sure to thank them uh, for their efforts and their successes. Is there room for improvement? Absolutely, there always is room for improvement in any situation. But that uh, isn't something that should uh, go unnoticed that with how successful they have all been and what they're doing uh, as a whole for our community. So I wanted to thank them.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, the last hand I see raised is uh, Mr. Donahue. Mr. Donahue, you're recognized.
There we go. Mr. Moderator, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Wonderful, thank you. Kevin Donahue, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three, uh, member of the school committee. Um, tonight, I I rise uh, in in all of my capacities, both as a town meeting member, a member of the school committee, and a father, father of three elementary students and a fourth student who is pre-elementary. Um, I had intended to come up with some words to say this afternoon, uh, but I um, I did not have an opportunity to do that. I spent the opp- the afternoon as um, a functional substitute teacher at homeschooling and uh, alternately helping people with math, reading, um, and dealing with the emotional vicissitudes of this situation that we find ourselves in. And to say that it is hard is um, is a gross understatement. It is probably the hardest thing that I have had to do as a parent. And I would like to acknowledge um, the hard work that the superintendent has done and the former superintendent's uh, did to get us to the point where we are here. Uh, I was I was, quite frankly, not sure that we would be in a in a situation that is as as terrible as it sounds, as good as we are now. Now, so I'd like to say thank you. Um, to all the parents who have voiced their concerns, uh, either for more time in school, uh, continued focus on on the equity nature of of what we're doing here. Your your concerns have been heard and um, I, they are appreciated and we thank you for them. Um, we have a meeting, not this Wednesday, but next Wednesday, and we encourage you to come to the school committee meeting and continue to share those concerns. I would like to point out that this um, this budgetary article is the the hard work, the fruition of the hard work between ourselves and the warrant committee and the select board. And it identifies a, the the pressing issue that we had prior to COVID, which is our massive enrollment issues, our our massive oversubscription in the Milton Public Schools. If interested readers would like, they can go back to our meeting minutes for the the meeting of November sixth, two thousand and nineteen. At that meeting, the school board invited then-principal Jett and um, middle school principal, um, Mr. Fish to um, to give us an a a rundown of the number of classes that had greater than twenty-eight students in at those levels. There were approximately forty-three, forty-three core classes. This is not band, this is not gym, this is not uh, elective. These are core academic disciplines with greater than twenty-eight students at the middle school level and the high school level. We desperately need, desperately need, teachers in classrooms to deal with this. And yes, the COVID pandemic uh, has necessitated reevaluation of our immediate short-term, hyper-short-term priorities, and we are doing our best to manage those. And if in the next few weeks, um, we, as a board, decide that that we need to spend additional funding to do that, we will, we will find a way to make those one-time expenditures uh, realized. However, we feel strongly, I feel strongly, I don't want to speak for my board, but I feel strongly that enshrining these six FTEs in our budget is a is a critical step to uh, maintaining our academic stability going forward. And I would like to thank the um, town meeting and I'd like to thank the the Select Board and the warrant committee for for helping us move forward with these. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Excuse me, thank you. And lastly, Ms. Collins, wish to just answer an implied question that was in one of the previous speaker's points. Ms. Collins, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Melinda Collins, Select Board Chair, one seventy Hillside Street, Precinct Nine Meeting Member. Although the stabilization is addressed in Article Two, it does have implications for this article as well, should we decide not to fund that seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to restore stabilization. Stabilization is is one of the most important tools that a town has, especially a town that has a structural financial deficit. In this way, we can provide a cushion in difficult times. And I realize, and my heart goes out to to every family in in our town. But we we had this money because we had put it aside. And while it may not be enough to fund every position that we would like to, if we don't restore stabilization funds, which the legislation calls for when stabilization funds are created, that the funds are not to be expended without a plan to to restore them. But we face a real possibility that our triple-A credit rating could be reduced. And we have bonding that we're going out for in February. It's important for that. We have school building needs. It will be important for that. And we have fire station building needs and and the restoration of our stabilization funds are important for that as well. In addition, we don't anticipate that FY twenty-two will be an easier budgetary year. If we don't restore stabilization funds, we really may not have what we need in order to to try to do the very best that we can for everyone in our town, including including our youngest residents. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing no further hands raised, we'll move to the vote. So administrator, could you put up the poll? All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. This is a simple majority vote. Also, could we unmute the phones? All those in the phone in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes. All those opposed?
Yes.
And any opposed? No. Thank you. I think we can close the vote. The motion passes eighty-five percent to fourteen percent, so the motion carries. Thank you. With that, we'll move to Article Two. Recommended that the town appropriate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the stabilization fund for the twelve-month period beginning July one, two thousand and twenty, and that to meet said appropriation, the sum of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars be raised from the tax levy. This was submitted by the Select Board. It just requires a majority vote. Does anyone wish to speak to this article? Seeing none? Let me just check again. Seeing none, we will call for the vote. All those in favor of the motion before the body, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, please vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. Can we unmute the phones? Mike, we unmute the phones? Are they all unmuted? All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying yes on the phone.
Yes.
Opposed? No. Thank you. We can close the poll. The motion carries with a vote of ninety-three percent to six percent. With that, that concludes our business. I'll entertain a motion to dissolve. If someone could just put in the chat, so moved into the Q and A window specifically. So moved, is there a second? I see a second. If we could just put up the poll briefly. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please signify by voting yes. All opposed, vote no. All abstaining, please vote abstain. If we could open up the phones. All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please signify by saying yes on the phone.
Yes.
And opposed? No on the phone? Thank you. We can close the poll. And the meeting is dissolved. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for your attendance. Thank you to our remote town meeting committee that is a little thin tonight. About three-quarters of them are all quarantining at home, so it's just the dedicated Mike Lynch helping me here in Council on Aging. Thank you. By the way, there should be another special town meeting coming up in February, so please watch for your warrant. With that, thanks for joining and good night.